Sit there, I see. Always have to check. Thank you.
Hi, Sue. How you doing?
Hello.
What? Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got a lot of calls all week.
Good. How are you? Cold enough for you?
I do, yeah. Yeah, Warren, Dave, and Steve are coming. Gary's, uh, might show up late if he shows up at all. Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Can I say? That's gonna be public hearing.
Some changes?
Look at the, uh, the staff review. There's, uh, several changes.
Hey, ready?
So this could be your teaching just tonight, so. I'd love to hear this. This could be. Sue wasn't able to come tonight, so we'll make sure.
It starts at midnight.
Yeah. Um, and then just that, go up there and then someone hit back.
This is just Mark. That's not, um, intending to.
Gary's amazing. He said he'll be late if he comes. Uh, but we have four, so.
He's not ringing. Who needs to get here?
Yeah, guys.
Who, how are you? What's that?
Where am I standing here? For or against?
This one.
Yeah. Are they?
Steve, Hawaii.
On paper, it's a big improvement over what's there now. I'm sure what they want.
I made you a copy too, if you needed a copy.
Presidential Limited, not general. Yeah. Oh, thanks.
So it could be either condo or apartment.
Right. Is there anything in the packet that's different than what we've seen?
And there's a project narrative on there that I was adding today. I just got yesterday.
Email too, right?
Email from that one? Yes. There's an email from a community member. Now, yes. And the plans were revised, actually. So everything. Pretty much everything, yeah. All got submitted yesterday. Only minor changes to the plan. Specifically the notes. The plans really didn't change. He just added. Notes about soil, notes about theme regulations, notes about building coverables. That kind of thing.
But it is by right, correct?
As far as zoning goes, yeah, by right. We're pretty much doing a, uh, a site plan review tonight.
Who are you, Warren? You look sharp.
Huh?
You look sharp. Nice haircut. Nice haircut.
So this is, uh, definitely.
That's a.
I got some. I got a. This has been before. Fifteen years ago. A paper converted into a process.
Yeah.
I want to find out why. And. Okay, so you know that's a problem. Now, these people. It was a, um, they made cinder blocks there. I think it was Solona. Solona brick, Solona cinder block. Yeah. North Providence Glass was in there for a while. And there were three or four small businesses in there.
But nobody's in there now.
I don't think so. I haven't been lie there in years.
I went by there, uh, yesterday. I saw a couple of trucks there, but.
Yeah, I kind of like the being in. From what I understand. To the hospital last Monday morning. Yeah. That's right. You living there on Friday?
I live on Mount Manchester.
All right, I think I can make it this time.
I'm off the hill.
I think I can make it.
Yeah, thank you. Bring for you. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Happy New Year.
So the question provided that.
That's, that's the concrete. So it's just down the hall as a water. Sorry.
What did he say?
All right, good evening, everybody. Like to call to order Town and North Providence Planning Board. Meeting here at two thousand Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. And, um, this is the, uh, planning board. I'd like to call the meeting to order today. Is February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. And if you would like to stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance, that'd be great. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we'll start the meeting off with the roll call and everybody from the planning board who's in attendance, state your name for the record.
Lou DeLucaio.
Warren Richard Tally.
David Parenti Chair.
Kelly Morris, South Shore Counsel.
Steve Patassi.
Brett McGinn, Town Planner.
We do have four active planning members, um, present tonight. We do have a quorum. Uh, first on the agenda, which is.
Would you mind just talking closer to the microphone?
Sorry. First on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from January twenty-ninth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Given the short amount of time period between when we last met and today's meeting, uh, those minutes are still being prepared. So you have to make a motion to dismiss that.
Yeah.
So we'll, um, continue that until the, um, the minutes are ready. The second on the agenda, um, actually, a third on the agenda would be a, a review of the comprehensive, uh, plan draft, uh, the public hearing. Um, our, um, town's consultant unfortunately was unable to meet tonight. So if you're here for item number three, a review of the comprehensive plan, uh, that will be postponed, um, until the following meeting. Item number two, um, is, the address is one fourteen Beard Avenue, Platte twenty-four A, Lot one-ten, Zone Residential Limited ten, RL ten. The applicant is Patriot Builders. One hundred and forty-ten Road Exeter, Rhode Island. The description is public hearing application for master plan review with request to compile preliminary plan review for an adaptive reuse development, converting the existing two structures into forty-eight residential units, meeting the maximum number of units per acre permitted by right for an adaptive reuse project under section two oh-three district use regulations of the zoning ordinance of North Providence.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Can you state your name for the record?
Uh, Jack McGreen. Um, I represent the applicant with law offices located at twenty-one Garden City Drive, Cranston, Rhode Island, oh-two-nine-two-oh. Uh, this is an application for master plan review, like you said, with a request that it be, uh, combined with preliminary plan approval for an adaptive reuse development, converting two existing buildings previously housing a cement company into a residential facility containing forty-eight units. On the applicant is Patriot Builds Incorporated. I have three witnesses. Tim Bean, a professional engineer with Commonwealth. Uh, Julie Bartlett, an architect with ZDS. And of course, uh, everyone knows Armin Cordless. Um, the area in question is located in an RL ten zone and consists of a single lot identified by the tax assessor as Lot one-ten on Assessor Platte twenty-four A. And is located at one-fourteen Beard Avenue. Excuse me. One sec. Um, the lot is owned by the applicant Patriot Builders Incorporated. And Armin Cordless is a sole member. The lot has four hundred and forty-eight point four-one feet of frontage on Beard Avenue and is comprised of three-point-two acres. Under section two oh-three Q of the North Providence zoning ordinance, uh, concerning adaptive reuse, uh, the density permitted is not less than fifteen units per acre, which translates into forty-eight units, uh, for this project. Um, Armin intends to convert the two existing buildings into residential housing with building one containing forty-two units and building two containing six units. Um, we submitted a letter from dated January twenty-fourth from the Providence Water Supply Board, uh, and that should be in your, should be in your packet, stating that there is sufficient reserve to service the multi-level residential development. Um, we're still waiting on DEM permits, which we've applied for, and we're also waiting on the Narick Ansabake Commission, uh, confirming adequate sewer capacity. Um, with that being said, I'd like to bring up Julie Bartlett. And I think we need to swear or anything.
I do. Julie Bartlett, B-A-R-T-L-E-T-T.
Julie, would you just briefly give your qualifications to the board?
I worked for ZDS Architecture and Interiors for almost nine years. I've been a licensed architect for eight, and I have represented multiple clients at a variety of, town planning and zoning boards throughout New England over the last five years.
I'd ask the board to recognize Ms. Bartlett as, as a architect.
Yes.
Could you just briefly go over the, um, the site and the, and the plan and elevation plans that you used developed the project?
Thank you, uh, members of chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board for having us here tonight. As, as our attorney has indicated, this is an adaptive reuse of two existing structures on property. Uh, a smaller existing underutilized office structure and a larger, um, existing two-story industrial building, both of which have been vacant for some time and a bit of what we have heard is an eyesore in the neighborhood. Um, our client is looking to repurpose these and bring a much-needed use of housing to the area. And we are, the proposal is to convert the smaller building to six individual walk-up units, so three would be accessed from street grade and their own individual access from the exterior. That's in the southerly part of the plan. And the other, the lower level units would be accessed also individually from the exterior from, um, from the, from the parking level. The larger building would also have two levels, some access from the street and then, um, we have nineteen access from the lower parking level and twenty-three access from street. In both buildings, we are raising the lower level basement floor to be above the floodplain at eighty-nine feet, which would give us one foot of freeboard above what our flood zone is in. We are repurposing the existing cinder block structure, um, reflating, putting new windows in to bring a lot of natural light and ventilation, and we would be putting, providing new roofs. Adding a very residential character to the structure that is not exist currently, um, bringing in some lap siding and trim work to connect the, connect all three buildings to have a similar. Sorry. We would connect the, the, relate the two structures with a similar cladding and trim. And, um, one of the other things I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, this, the parking that's shown in front of this is actually, has been updated with the civil plans from when we, uh, did this rendering. So there's actually some grass in front of the building that is not shown in the rendering right now. So as mentioned, there's a total of forty-eight units on property, forty-two in the larger building and six in the smaller with all the parking behind and some green space as well, that we're trying to remove some of the asphalt and provide green space and landscaping.
Oh, not at this time. No, continue with the presentation.
Thank you.
It's kind of, I see you guys talk directly into the mic.
Yeah. Uh, good evening. For the record, Timothy. Timothy Behan, professional engineer with the firm Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, Providence, Rhode Island. Yes, I do. I, I know Tim's, uh, been before this board in several occasions, so I just asked that the board recognize him as an expert engineer.
Uh, yes, we recognize Tim as a professional engineer.
Okay. Very good. I'd like to, uh, run through the, uh, site plans. Very good. And this, this sheet is the demolition plan. The existing site, uh, as we just heard, has two existing buildings. They're the ones in brown here. Uh, this is Beard Avenue and this is Ward Avenue. Uh, the existing site, it has a lot of pavement out there. This entire hatched area is all pavement out there or building. So this plan is a demolition plan, and if you look closely, the air, the hatch area that has the crosshatching is all pavements which are going to be removed from the project.
Is all pavements which are going to be removed from the project. The solid hatch here is the proposed parking area, so that will be resurfaced with new asphalt. So essentially, that's just showing the amount of pavement that's out there and the amount of pavement that's going to be, uh, taken away. And if you notice closely, as we mentioned, uh, previously, the front of the building is all paved now. And that's going to be converted to landscaping and, uh, lawn. The proposed plan is pretty simple. The building's going to stay, both buildings. The, the pavement is in the same spot, but it's a lot smaller. It's going to be resurfaced. It's going to be striped. It's going to be, uh, graded, uh, to slope the drainage off to the existing area where it goes now. And the drainage does go in the back towards the north. This up area up here is an existing wetland. And for stormwater, the stormwater has a redevelopment code, which this qualifies for. And since we're removing so much pavements, that's enough credit. So we don't have to do any additional storm weather, uh, stormwater measures. And we still need a stormwater permit from D E M, but. That's why there's no proposed stormwater. It's just so much pavements are being removed from the, on the job. What else we have? Uh, the next sheet is, um, the soil erosion control plan. And this plan is also going to D E M for review and approval since we exceed one acre in site disturbance. So we need a D E M permit for the soil erosion control measures, but the plan has been designed in accordance with state and, uh, local standards. And lastly, I just want to show you. Of the neighborhood close and all the streets leading to, uh, the site, our sites up here. And you can see this is Route two forty six here, Mineral Spring Avenue and Power Road. Uh, surround the site and all these streets lead off into these directions. So if you're leaving the site heading south towards Mineral Spring, you can go down Baird, Campbell, Garfield. I mean, if you're going towards the Pawtucket Eastway, you'd go probably down Ward Street and go down Finch or Oriole or, um, what is that, Handerton? And if you're going west or north, you, you leave the site in this direction. Go down Lloyd J Boulevard, down towards, uh, two forty six and off in that direction. Other than that, let's, we can answer any questions if you have any questions.
Thank you.
That, that completes our presentation for now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I'll leave the, um, it open to the board to ask, uh, the applicant any questions that they have. Who would like to go first?
You propose, are you proposing any outside lighting in the parking area?
Armin Cordlessso, C O R T E L L E S S O.
So I'm going to need to ask you about outside lighting.
Oh, outside lighting is, uh, if you look at the plan.
And if you don't mind to speak directly into the mic.
All around the building has outside lighting, and if you look in the parking area around the island. And where it jogs in, you see a little dot and it says, um, parking lot light typical. You'll see that in several areas around the parking area. And then it also has light on the building, which would softly light up the walkways. You know, it, it, it has to be lit. People can see where they're going.
Is, is this downloading, Armin? Is it downloading washing the building or is it shining out?
No, 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 it's, it's downloading. It doesn't shine out.
Has the applicant, um, prepared a photometric study of the exterior lighting proposed for the project? For a candle?
No.
Okay, are, are there any hazmat issues, uh, that you are aware of on the site?
No, 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 the site is actually in very nice condition. Well, they don't, they don't, they don't understand what I mean, um, the, the, the.
Yeah, we can, we can continue, um, how, how did you come to that determination?
Well, I have my, uh, engineer on the job and I also had, um. Had from Natural Resources go out and look at all the property and also flag. Um, any wetlands, um, buffer zones. And at the same time, look everything over, um, this is prior to me buying it.
Okay, has, um, your engineers provided a, a report? Documenting their findings and their conclusions on the soil and any, uh, existing building materials?
No, we just had an engineer from Natural Resources. And he came out and, um, looked at all the soils and he, um, they also did some. Uh, Tim, you did some wet with the soils on here. Basically, there's something in the.
I think, Mr. Chairman, are you asking if we did a phase one on the property? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, well, I'm just continuing to ask what Lou was asking and, and if there are any hazardous materials on, on site. The applicant said no, and I asked how did he come to that conclusion?
Right.
And then without. But so he was explaining that engineers visited the site and I had asked if there was any documentation or reports that the engineers. Produced that would allow the applicant to respond in the manner that he did.
I think the applicant was stating was his visual observations when he went out to look at the property, looked in it, didn't see any chemicals. But he has not done a soil analysis to determine if there's anything in the soil surrounding the property.
Okay, thank you.
And, and it's, it's, it's brick. It's not paint, so it's, uh.
The, the comp, the company that was there was a cement company. Um, they make blocks and they do masonry work, um. I feel somewhat of a professional myself. I've been doing this for over forty years and I have done an. Awful lot and I don't, I did an awful lot in this town. Um, I kind of know when I see something. I, I have a, I, I have a good eye for it myself. I mean, you can't look at the grounds and see some blocks and. You know, see some wooden pallets that have been there so long that they decayed. Um, there's nothing wrong with all of that. That's, that's all natural stuff, okay? The place is all asphalted. Um, it's, it's not a, it, it's, it's, it's in good standings is, I mean. The building's old, the building hasn't been taken care of. So it has, you know, some parts where the roof is missing a little bit and some things like that. And that's, I guess, what they're talking about. They don't, I don't think understand what you're talking of. So when they say they look at the building and we have some pictures here of the building. In its condition now, we can show you and that's, I believe that they're. They're basing their opinion on, so, um, which, which you hear right now. You, you, you can see that the. You, you can see that the, the, the building has been sort of rundown. And, uh, when it needed a broken window fixed, it wasn't. When it needed a garage door fixed, it wasn't. And instead of fixing the garage door, they, they piled. A bunch of pallets full of new blocks. And that's how they blocked the door, so you couldn't go in. You can't move it unless you have a forklift, so in a sense, it's, it's a pretty good thing, but there's nothing wrong with that.
So to get back to Lou's question about understanding whether or not there are hazardous. Materials on, on the site, do you, do you plan to do an environmental study of the soils and of the existing building materials?
Well, I, I haven't planned on it for the simple reason that I know in my experience that there isn't, but, um. I mean, it's, you know. Not a big deal to do it.
Kind of, was it just? On a phase one environmental, you would go to D E M, look at the records to see what the history of the building was, what was there before? Was there a gas station, for example? I think that's what you're asking for. We haven't done that. We could do that if, if that's what the board's asking for, um, but unless, that would be a phase one, um. You want to start drilling, you know, holes into the ground unless you suspected you would go further and then order a phase two. But a phase one would be basically checking the records, um, at D E M to determine if there was, uh. You know, but this is a cement company. It wasn't a jewelry company. It wasn't a gas station. It wasn't some, it wasn't a cleaner, dry cleaners. It's been a cement company. I believe for quite a long time.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just to follow up on that, if a phase one was done by an engineering firm, they would tell you if a phase two is required.
Uh, that's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
I will say I did some research on this property, uh, and it's not currently a regulated facility as far as D E M is concerned, unlike. The London Street property, for instance, which is a regulated facility. They know there's toxins that need to be remediated, whereas this one. It's not.
Thank you, Brett. Lou, do you have any more questions?
No.
Okay, Warren, do you have questions?
I have a few questions, um. I've been on this board longer than anyone here. And I remember this property coming, uh, before us, I'm going to say fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. Uh, for housing.
Warren, can you talk into the mic?
They were going to put single-family housing in there, if I remember correctly. One of the problems we had over there was, um, the, I believe it's a runoff from Gillen Platte. And what happened was this, the town spent a great deal of time and money having that engineered a few years ago. And it has alleviated most of the problems in the Gillen Platte. Are you aware of any problems on this property with any water? Uh, i- in any of the last ten years? I know you haven't had possession. I've been looking at it for. For that long, but are you aware of any problems with water?
Um, I, I am not aware of any problems with water on the property, um.
Uh, we don't have a public hearing yet, ma'am. I'd like to just ask you kindly to save your comments for the public hearing. Thank you.
Um, the fellow I bought it off, I have known for. He's, he's been a mason.
Know the history of the property going back that far?
I'm not in here.
You don't know the history of the property going back that far?
That's what I was saying, um, the fellow that I bought the property from, I've known. Probably forty, forty-five years. He's a mason in the town.
Okay, the.
He, he is, uh, I think a pretty respectable guy and I spoke with him lately. I've been there many a times over the last, pretty close to a little over a year since we got involved. And, and I spoke with him on this, okay, and he showed me around the properties. Um, and there's not an indication of water, um, on the property. And I've been there in a, a couple of pretty good rainstorms. Um, and I want to say that I, I did not see any. I see the water that's, that's there and a couple of puddles and stuff because of the low and highs in the ground and. That type of stuff.
Can I ask if, um, you wouldn't mind having your, 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 um, civil engineer? Uh, come up and speak to the board about, uh, the stormwater. Conditions on the site and any ground. Uh, water conditions.
The, the issue with excess water is associated with a floodplain. That's, uh, there's a stream behind to the north of the subject site.
Yep.
And in the wetland there, there's a stream and it goes downstream. A few hundred feet and goes into some sort of culvert system. Which travels under the roadways in the town and dumps. Down towards the stop and shop. So there's a big pipe underground leading in that direction. And during heavy, heavy big storm events, that area does have a flood zone associated with it. And that is on the FEMA map and that's on our plan as well. And we're required by state law to have all living spaces above that, which we have done for this project.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of other questions too, uh, one was the, uh, the layout. I looked at it initially and I saw the high parking lot in the back of the building. But you, you, you're forcing people to walk around the building to, to, to the entrance on the side, on the north side.
It, there's some walking around the building for some of the people in part of the front.
Okay, have you thought about putting a bridge? So that people on the second floor can just walk in that way rather than walk down and, and up. It's just a suggestion.
May, maybe your architect can explain the pedestrian traffic on, on the site from parking lot to.
She, she actually is the designer, so.
Yeah, thank you.
So the, from the parking in the back, we have a rear ramp and lobby from the parking level. And so prime, it is assumed that anyone who lives here would come from the parking level to enter the building into the lobby, which is in red on my plan. Right here, and then from that lobby, there's access to a stair that brings you directly upstairs. This is also our level that would have the type A required accessible unit that we would need, um, with the ramp as well. The building doesn't, as two stories, does not require an elevator, so there is access from the street. For anyone who might walk or take a bike, but it is assumed that most people would come in from the back and take, into the lobby and take the stair upstairs to their unit.
So you can go either way.
Okay, but that's, that's an architectural thing that you guys.
Yeah, but I just, I just wanted to answer that you can't go either way. I just thought it would be better coming from her.
Yeah, it, it was.
And, um, one other, one other comment I have, and that is the capacity. Um, I think you had. Forty-two units, was it? And how many of them?
Totally forty-eight.
Forty-eight. And the number of, uh. Forty-eight units, um, which would be, um, a combination of one, two and studio units. As a, as a taxpayer in this town and all of us are, we're always worried about expenses. And, um, with two bedroom. With two bedrooms in a unit, it usually means children in there. Uh, and that means a, a burden on the school department again.
Warren, that's, that, that's not a standard for review of the application before the landing board.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
I'd like to just comment that, in addition, a lot of people are using two-bedroom units for dens and offices. Because of the amount of work from home that people are doing right now, so the two-bedroom or one-plus den is a very common. Um, apartment or condo that people are renting and purchasing in current times with the changes that have happened since COVID as well, so.
Thank you. Warren, do you, that was your last question?
No, that's it.
Steve, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. A couple of questions. Are these condos or apartments? What I.
Well, I, I build everything as condos. Um. Just for our investment.
Right.
Okay, because an apartment building would have to be sold as an entirety. And you have to really find. And you have to really find a right buyer, but if you make them as condos, you can sell them individually, and because of their sizes, they'd be a real great number where people can really afford them. Uh, because they're they're not something big in three hundred and fifty-four, four hundred and fifty thousand, and nowhere near that. So they they accommodate the people today, and they accommodate a sale that somebody could buy in the future.
So you haven't said any prices yet?
Rentals?
No, have you said any?
Oh, no, 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 we're not selling them.
You're not selling them?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
That was my question.
Because the um, the housing today, a- as if you even seen Channel Ten this morning, you would have seen how what a big demand it is. I have many other um condo projects in North Providence, and I rent them. And if someone moves out and we advertise it, it's it's rented that day. Because there's such a demand for it. So when we build them at the size we're building them, we're giving people a great deal. The rents aren't astronomical, so we're not building twelve hundred square feet where you're gonna come in and pay twenty-five, twenty-six hundred. You'll be in here for a whole lot less money than that. You can afford it. So that's that's the idea of what we're doing with this new law that was passed in January.
Okay, thank you. Did you had, did you do a traffic study?
Well, I I didn't do a traffic study, um, because again, I've been in here for doing this for many, many years, okay, and I have subdivisions that go funnel out into one road. Um, there's actually sixteen different ways out of here. Um, you know, um, excuse me, excuse me, you guys, a minute, you'll get your chance. I won't do that when you're talking.
Uh, may the applicant address the board rather than the the public at this time?
Yeah, I just won't do that when they're talking.
We appreciate it. Thank you. And if everybody can just kindly.
Basically, when you pull out of here.
Until the public hearing. Thank you.
When when you pull out of here, you pull on to uh Beard Avenue and immediately is an intersection with Ward. You can go to the left. You can go down the Power Road, Pawtucket. You can take on Ward, on on Ward Avenue, you can take probably six different streets out to Middle Spring or towards Pawtucket. You can go out to the right, and there's another enormous around the streets of, here's the property. Here's um, the Route one forty-six, Middle Spring Avenue, Power Road. Like, and this is Chow Street or two forty-six right here. I mean, if you look at the streets of where you go, there's sixteen of them. So it just depends if you want to go towards Lincoln, get on the highway at two forty-six, or if you want to go Middle Spring, Power Road, or if you want to come out, take a right onto Chow's, uh, onto Middle Spring, take a left to Chow Street to go down, or go up Middle Spring Avenue and pick up one forty-six. There's there's just an enormous amount of ways to go. Depends which direction you want to go in.
I appreciate that, but I would have liked to see a study tonight. That's just me.
Well, if if in fact everybody had to get out at once, you would have two cars on these street if they all left exactly the same time. Just think of how many roads there are.
Well, you're probably gonna add about seventy-five cars, am I right?
No.
No, I'm wrong, okay?
No, no, we're not looking.
Tell me, uh, tell me how many cars would be looking at it?
We're looking more at, uh, we need one parking place per unit. That's the law, that's that's the law.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, a traffic study is generally due at preliminary plans, so if the planning board wants a traffic study, they can require one.
Oh, I I I I understand.
Oh, so we're only at master plan?
I'm just talking about it, that's all.
I I I think, I'll tell you my my client's thought process, because there's so many means of ingress and egress out of this property. Quite frankly, we thought that the need for a traffic study was an overkill, but if that's what the board is requesting, then that then that's what we'll do.
Well, I I'd like to see one, and I'd like to see Dave D'Amico here, our engineer, here when you present it. So.
Would you present a traffic study?
Yeah, I'd like to have him here if there's questions.
Mr. Chairman, again, the planning board can require a peer review, which you you've done before on other projects.
Right.
So including on stormwater management, on traffic, Mr. D'Amico, before you come back, would peer review them and perhaps be invited to the meeting to discuss it?
Correct. Steve, do you have any more?
Oh, no.
Questions?
No.
Okay, um, I have a, I have a couple for the for the applicant, um. In regarding the um, the building, the two structures that are on the property, are there any modifications to the footprint of either one of the buildings?
Yeah.
No, thank you. Um. The architect did say that the first floor of the larger building is being is being raised up above the the floodplain, is that correct?
It'll be one foot over, as the law calls it to be.
Okay, yeah.
Both both buildings, lower level floor will be raised to to accommodate the floodplain.
Okay, and in in height of the overall massing of the building, does that does that change the um, the elevation of the the floors above and then?
Yes.
And then the roof line as well?
Correct, and that's that is reflected in our package that was submitted. It should, we have a section that was provided that shows the
Okay.
On the site plan. Right here.
Staff has confirmed that it meets the thirty-five-foot requirement for RL ten zones. Thank you, Brett. Okay. Um. Regarding the 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 layout of the of the site, um. There appears to be only one access in in one, which also there there appears to be only one vehicular access in and out of the the site, and on, is that an existing curb cut? Is there even a curb there?
For the record, Timothy Behan, uh, yes, that is the existing curb cut, and it's gonna remain.
Okay, and that with allows for two-way traffic?
Yes, that's standard twenty-four-foot wide aisle.
Okay, um. Has the applicant or the engineering team given any um thought in adding a second way, vehicular way in and out of the site? Um, potentially from the the east end of the site onto Dickinson? In addition, in addition to the vehicular access off of Beard?
No, no, we haven't. There's only what do we have, sixty-five parking spaces?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have anything else to add to your presentation before we open it up to the public? No? Okay. Um, so before we open it up, so thank you very much for your for your presentation. Um, actually, no, I have what, I'm sorry, um, for the architect, looking at the the floor plans, it it there does seem to be a number of uh, units that have no access to natural daylight. Um. Which struck me as odd. Can you walk me through um, the the intent behind that and whether or not that's applicable per the residential code? Or whether or not a redesign would need to be done in order to meet?
So ironically, the code does allow for no windows. It is not something that you would want to do, but we, because if you're doing mechanical ventilation, et cetera, there's other, there's other means. However, there is an error in this, and in this plan, there is a window in the corner of the one-bedroom in here, so there would be a window into this corner unit. And there would be a window into this one-bedroom unit as well.
Mm-hmm.
The utility is what's backed up against the retaining wall, so there would be no windows there, and then we have the windows that we're adding on the opposite side. So the intent is not for there to be zero windows in any unit. There might be no windows in one of the bedrooms of or of an interior bedroom, which is allowed by code. Technically, if the room is the unappropriate side, then you have artificial light and mechanical ventilation.
Okay, I I still see maybe one more unit that will not have access to daylight. Yep, that guy right there, put your pen down, them, and then on the um. Yeah.
This is first floor. A both, it looks like both floors. So these these two, we've satisfied. This is the the inside corner unit. Um, that might trigger a modification. Um, we might jog the floor plan such as so to accommodate a window into that corner unit.
Okay, um, it may be too soon to ask this, but does does the project team feel comfortable that modifications to the interior layout in order for the um for the does, for the architectural design to meet building code and life safety code? Will that render a change? It, do you think that will render a change in number of units that this current footprint can support?
No, I think if anything, it would maybe reduce a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom.
Okay.
Is potentially the modification, but the unit count is not intended to change. We have done a study of about a third of the units confirming layout of bathrooms, kitchens, utility rooms, et cetera, bedrooms within within each, within some of the units. And that is how we determined that we felt that this was the appropriate unit count for the building.
Okay. Thank you. Um. And on the the exterior, so thank, thank you very much for providing um an exterior rendering. Um, I would, I would think that you would call it, call that a conceptual rendering for for right now. Um. I do appreciate uh the application of of residential materials on the on the on the building. Um, however, the um. Has there been any thought in in maybe um, doing something a little bit more with the finessration to help to help break up the the scale of the building? It is a very long building. Um, across the street, we have single-family homes. Um. And I was wondering if any consideration in in breaking up the scale of the building with uh, maybe different materials or different colors is is a consideration for the team?
I think we can take a look at that as we're moving into our or or may, yeah, maybe change, each of the masses has some different color. There's a, you know, it's, maybe it's all lapped, but it's two different tones of blue, or maybe there's two different window types that happen throughout the building. I think that that's certainly something we can consider or.
The uh, just one little in the peaks.
Just an articulation of of like, there's, sometimes we'll do, like, some kind of a medallion of some sort, trim, trim work.
We can dress it.
We can certainly look at into that.
Something aesthetically pleasing that addresses the the length of the building and its and its presence on the.
Yes, no, we can totally do that.
Certainly.
We did do that to some of the buildings on Manello Street, and everybody actually ended up liking it very much. So yes, we can do that.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Yep, can I ask Kelly a question?
Uh, yeah, well, sorry, keep you up here.
Go ahead.
Uh, Kelly, um, under the adaptive use, is there a minimum size on on units based on studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Well, there's a minimum housing requirement, which is really small, mu- much smaller than the these. So no, the what what the adaptive reuse statute talks about is the density um, per acre. And the only comment I have, and I I don't want to give this advice tonight, but there is a discussion in the statute about low and moderate income housing units that, you know, I don't you know, I don't want to give that advice tonight. I want to look at it more closely. Um, because North Providence is a little bit different than other communities in terms of LMI. But um, I just want to bring it to your attention that I'm gonna look at that.
As though there may be a requirement, is that what you're implying?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So the answer is, the units could be even smaller than this, under minimum housing requirements, but they're allowed fifteen units per acre under an adaptive reuse project.
We we have designed micro-units in the past, and while I don't think that's the right application for this building, it is, it is allowable per code to do like two hundred and fifty square foot apartments. They are studio and very tiny, and but it's, that's not what we're doing here, so. More of an urban condition.
I'm just saying, as an aside, I just spoke with my client, and he wouldn't be surprised that many of these rental units are gonna fit with me, one of them.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know what the town desires, you know, so I I don't want to give that advice tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so um. We will open up the public hearing, um, boy, before we we do so, um, there are many of you here in the audience, which our board definitely appreciates. Um, we think that uh, input from the community just assists in the process um, that that our board administers. I kindly ask for everyone to um listen to your community members' comments, and if that person asks a question or has a comment that is like the comment that you would like to say, we we will address that. Um, so just, I'm just asking for um, a team effort here in in efficiency in in listening to the community's comments. Um, the applicant here is requesting a master plan and preliminary plan um, approval tonight. That is a request that's not a requirement of this board to grant that request. Typically, or in the past, master plan approval is a a concept, and the applicant presents a concept in land development, and the board renders an opinion on whether or not that concept meets the comprehensive plan in line with the town zoning ordinance. The second step would be either going to the zoning board and or coming back to this board for preliminary. It's kind of backwards. Master plan goes before preliminary. Preliminary presentation is when the site design is further developed with engineering of the site. Um, and um, architecturally from the exterior, the so, the the project is furthermore developed. That's a sec, that's the second step. The third step would be a final approval that could be granted by this board if we deem so, or it could be also handled administratively by the town planning officer. In addition to those steps, there is a fire review, life safety review by the town, and a building department review by the town's building department. In addition to all those town approvals, there are, this project is also subject to state approvals um, regarding the um, stormwater and um wetlands. Do I, you guys have to go for wetlands, and and a wetlands? Um. Uh, application, those those steps are administered by Rhode Island D E M. So thank you for listening to all of that. What I'm trying to say is tonight is not the only night that this project has in its approval process. So with that, we'll open up the public hearing. It is six fifty-four P M. Good evening. Can you state your name for the record?
Dino Odiello, A U T, I E L L O. North Providence Town Council President. I'm also the councilman at large, so I represent the whole town. With me is Stefano Famigetti, Councilman District Two, and Chuck Pollak, Councilman District Two. So they. So they both represent the area that we're discussing to tonight. Um, I would just like to speak on behalf of the town council. And be on behalf of the many residents that are here tonight that we are adamantly opposed to this project. We don't think the lot calls for that. You know, I remember as a kid riding my bike down Garfield Street, which we would be the back entrance, you could barely fit two cars down it. Let alone adding seventy-five more cars on onto that street. Um, I know of recently a developer that walked away from the project due to environmental issues. So I think you need to require a traffic study, that should be seen now. I think there needs to be a class one and class two environmental study, because I know there's environmental issues with that property. And um. I think especially if you're gonna have children living in there, there's proposed two bedrooms. You know that's gonna be a burden on our school department, you don't want to put children in a place with no environmental stu- study. Done on the uh, soil, so again, I know myself. I know Stefano and Chuck want to speak, but we are opposed to this project. That project, that property has been looked at dozens of time in my time on the council and there is always. Environmental issues and this and that, so again, I'd like to state my opposition to it, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, um, try not to echo what Dino said, but um. I totally agree that before this moves any forward, any any uh, any additional steps forward for this applicant. They're asking for your approval of something. You should ask that they provide the experts so that you're satisfied and that they're satisfied. Environmental studies, water runoff issues, all in that area, um, traffic studies. You know, Dino talked about being in that area, uh, about traffic, I grew up in that area, I still live in that area. I remember riding my bike or walking by on Ward Street with my friends, looking in the back of that property, wasn't just concrete blocks. Car parts, tires. So we we can talk about experts and I do think you should require them, but. The people out here have a better understanding of what that property is than what has been presented here tonight. I don't think that the presentation is um, persuasive at all with regard to those issues. There there is nothing to rely on other than eyeball assessments, um. When people who have lived there for forty or fifty years have seen with their own eyes. What sort of environmental hazards have been there, also, uh, nobody talked about. Uh, the applicant was kind enough to to point out, um, that the building itself is in disrepair and he's right about that. But what comes with disrepaired buildings and uh, buildings that are not occupied, rodent issues. Before anything happens in there, before they start doing any work in there. I would like to know what kind of impact, which are gonna draw rodents into the uh, neighborhood that's going to. Cause issues for the residents behind me, uh, I think these are all uh, burdens for the applicant and before anything moves forward. This board should be satisfied that all these boxes are checked off. And and you know, you're gonna hear a lot about it tonight, I'm sure you can see it by the maps, it really does not fit the qual- the 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 neighborhood. It's it's, you're you're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, so I could go on and talk a lot. I know that the residents have a lot more to say than I do, um, but uh. I do think that this board should proceed very cautiously. And make sure that this development crosses all the Ts, dots all the Is. Uh, and make sure that there are no deleterious effects that are going to be on this neighborhood, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, I'm not gonna uh, take much of your time, I know there's a lot of people from the neighborhood that want to speak and have some very good information. I just think another thing that should be added or should be requested is a uh, assessment from the fire department. Bear Ave, there's only three or four houses on that end of Bear Ave, they're talking one mean, uh, one means coming in on Bear Ave into that property. I know what it is to drive fire apparatus, I was a firefighter for thirty-one years. If you ever have an emergency in that building, around that building, you're gonna have major issues with accessibility. Which is gonna cause ill effect on people in the neighborhood. Like I said, I'm not gonna take much of your time, but I think also a study from the fire department. It should be required amongst everything else that they've spoke about.
Thank you for your time. Thank you gentlemen, thank you gentlemen. So um, trying to take copious notes again to to try to um, keep this process efficient. Uh, we did hear um, from the council, uh, men, members who are present tonight that um. Their recommendation would be for a traffic study, phase one and possibly phase two assessment. Uh, rodent pest control, fire department at assessment of the site plan. Uh, are there any members in the public who would like to come up and speak, ladies first? And um, yeah, that's a, that's a great point, um. Warren, you you have been on this board a while, I will ask that um, everybody gets uh, their fair share at the microphone. One time please, thank you, state your name for the record.
Jody Olivo, O L I V O. Good evening, my name is Jody Olivo and my husband Steve and I have lived on Garfield Street for over thirty years. We live one street over from the property on one fourteen Baird Avenue. I'm here tonight to voice a few of our concerns, first, traffic on Garfield Street has always been busy. Cars speed and cut through our neighborhood from Power Road in Pawtucket and Mineral Spring to get to one forty-six North. There are speed bumps, we've tried to get extra speed bumps for the safety of our students and our kids, we've been denied and several streets do have them. The stop signs are at almost every single corner, which also suggests that the amount of cars that are speeding and cutting through our neighborhood. Is exponential, with the additional forty-eight residential units. Which unfortunately is the maximum number of units permitted for that area, the number of cars and our already. Narrow streets will increase potentially from forty-eight to ninety-six additional cars. Especially hearing that their two bedroom could be four adults, could be four cars, I have grown children, they have several vehicles. Second, our house on um, Garfield Street is built on the former Gillan Pond. During our thirty years, we have noticed that our property is already sinking. The underground water has seeped through our foundation and has caused flooding in our basement. If this land on one fourteen Baird is filled in for these residential units. We are concerned that the water that usually floods one fourteen Baird. Will further be diverted to our property and cause further damage. Finally, we are also concerned with the amount of water and sewerage from these units. And want to be assured that our sewer lines would be upgraded to keep up with this increased demand. We had to contact North Providence Public Works numerous times over the years. To snake out our sewer lines as they get clogged in the street, causing backups into our ba- basements. Thank you for listening and I hope you take these concerns with your consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, good evening, members of the board, my name's Anthony Costello, I reside at forty-three Dickinson Ave and I'm a butter. Like to thank my neighbors for turning out tonight, my only comment is the current site. Um, while anything would be an upgrade to it, I just urge that the project is done in its entirety to the letter of the law. The current site right now, the best I can describe it is resemble something in between where Fred Flintstone worked. In bedrock and a landfill, it's, it's a mess, I walk by it all the time. Um, I think there's gonna be a lot of work that's gonna be need to done, that done there. I do uh, actually want to thank the applicant for presenting a plan, uh, my family is. Has a family member who's going through struggles finding affordable housing, I think there's a definite need for it. But there's also a definite need to protect the environment in that neighborhood, I think it's gonna have a tremendous impact. On those three or four houses at the tail end of Bear Ave. And as Mister Pollack mentioned, uh, getting emergency vehicles in and out there with just one entrance and exit could be a concern. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sure, hi, state your name for the board.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Cabral, C A B R A L. I'm a lifelong resident of North Providence, I've lived on Dorment Avenue my whole life, my mom has lived on Dorment Avenue her whole life. My sister lives next door, I live across the street from my parents, at one point, my grandfather's family owned the whole street and sold it off, so. I have a lot of um, history in the neighborhood and um. I have a ten year old, an eight year old and a five year old, and let me tell you, there is a reason why Mister Cordalesso didn't do a traffic study. That is because it would impact him negatively by presenting it to the board. My sister's car was totaled on the street a couple of years ago, someone has been hit on the street and my daughter was almost run over on our street. Because the amount of traffic is insane in that neighborhood. I walk all the time with my kids, I've seen many of these people that are behind me, I see them and I'm sure they've heard me yell. Move over, there's a car coming, it's speeding by, because they drive like maniacs down the street, it's, there's already too much traffic um, in this area. To put something like this in this area would be very, very negative, negative detrimentally to the neighborhood. On top of that, the the traffic is so bad that my husband and myself have ac- actually petitioned the street. Got votes to put the speed bump on Dorment Avenue after my daughter was almost hit by a car and run over. Um, I I think maybe that was actually presented to this board by attorney Famag- Famagadi behind me. Um, to do that, so we did have to get a speed bump for the reason of the amount of traffic in the, in the area. Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I apologize. I also agree with attorney Famagadi in that there are errors in their plans that have been presented to you. I've heard, you know, how many parking spots, forty-eight, seventy-five, it seems that they're not aware of that. They had, they're not looking into environmental, they're not looking into the water runoff, at one point, that whole area was a swamp. Like there, there are issues in that area already with flooding, when it rains, the people on Lojai Boulevard, they all have dumpsters in their driveway. Because their basements are all flooded, so the water runoff is a huge issue. And doing something like this is just going to make an even bigger issue for the residents of the neighborhood. And if they want, I agree that something needs to be done to the property, this is not it, this is not what needs to be done in this neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gina Marini, my family owned that building. I think I know that site better than anybody in this room, because my family bought that in nineteen seventy-eight. And I've been working there since nineteen seventy-eight, that building was never, uh, they never made block there, I think they stopped in seventy-five. A Portuguese guy bought it, tried it, couldn't do it. From seventy-six to seventy-eight was abandoned, my brother Frank Marini, who sold the business, uh, the property to that man. Last month, which is okay, um, we bought it, it was in disarray. We bought it, we fixed it all up, that was used as a mason every company since nineteen seventy-eight, we stored all our staging. Our block and everything else, we never made block, block was never made there since nineteen seventy-five, number one, number two. I know that site better than anybody because I drove down there every single day and I had to go in the back to the staging room. To load my truck with scaffolding and plank and this and that, and when it rained hard. I would go to about a foot of water every single time, we had to actually put a burr at the top of the driveway. Otherwise the water would be cut, a gushing down the hill, it was incredible, my truck would get a foot of water. That being said, because the drainage was no good, we never fixed it, we we tried, but it didn't work. What I'm saying is, I think not, all these uh, families that he wants to bring, which is fine, he paid a lot of money for the property. Uh, the guy's a very nice man, but so many people, that stop sign is bad, they they just want, and I'm one of them. I run that stop sign more than anybody and my wife keeps telling me. And one of these days I'm gonna hit a car, I'm gonna get a ticket and it's, that's my fault, but it is what it is, I do what I do. But by adding all these people, it's only gonna make it worse, number one, I think. Houses, you want to build eight or nine houses, eight or nine families, fine, in that area. What is that, sixteen, twenty people, I could go for that, I live right across the street, I built a white brick house, that's my house. I gotta look at that more than anybody in this room, I got the worst spot, me. Cause I wanted to build it over there, because when we bought the property, the lane across the street came with the property. So I took a lot, my brother Larry, God rest his soul, he passed away, gave me three lots. And I took, I built my house there in nineteen eighty-seven and I love it, it's set up the way I want it. But with all these added people, added cars, this, that and the other, it's 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 not a good thing. Houses, fine, you minimize the people, I think I can go for that, this, no way. Cause I'm the one who's gotta look at it. And I'm opposed to it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Please state your name for the record.
Leslie Corno, C O R, N E A U.
Can you also include your address as well?
Sure, it's twenty-two Campbell Ave. And I've been a longtime resident there, I've been at my house there for over fifty years. And we still have some residents that have in that same neighborhood that have been there longer than I have. So I know the street and the area very well, because we were kids, um, we used to play in that area. So this is a picture of that area, just as two years ago when it got flooded. When it gets flooded, you can almost use it as a lake, because the thing is. In fact, right here is just all the back part, I don't know if you can see it, but it gets so flooded that it's just unbearable, like how. How everything is in the back there, so that with that being said too, um, I know they had mentioned that. These units are not condos, but they are units that. Um, what our concern is, is that if they're low income housing. Or if they can even be section eight housing, the safety of our neighborhood. Because our neighborhood, right now, we haven't had any issues, no problems, has not been any crimes, has not been anything. And I'm not saying because people live in low income housing, that's what kind of people you're gonna get. We're just concerned about safety as well, if these are gonna be low income houses and then. If people are gonna be in there or if they're gonna section out the the housing, you know, what kind of. And forgive this word, riffraff, we're gonna get into the neighborhood. So that's a, another big concern that I know maybe people don't want to talk about, but I know they think about it and they don't want to mention it, so. There it goes, I mentioned the elephant in the room, so, so, do you have anything to add? So, but again, we are opposed of this development, so I just wanted to concern that, my my. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your address, please?
Yes, my name is Mary Lou Petrucci, P E T R U C C I. And I live at eighty Meadow Road in North Providence. And I'll be very brief, because what I'm going to say is just gonna dovetail with a few of the remarks that were made, uh, my backyard. Um, abuts the wetlands, which abuts this property that is being looked at for development. And I will tell you that over the last year, the um, situation with the water has completely changed. Now, the property has been in my family for fifty years, I've lived there for most of the fifty years. And you know, we, it was described earlier about how it would uh, flow through uh, into a pipe that would go down. Essentially into Canada Pond, but what's happened is that there has been like this major, like almost like a holding area. I'm not sure why, I've asked and I've heard something about some development up in Lincoln. Uh, Twin Rivers paving a parking lot which diverted.
Twin Rivers paving a parking lot which diverted the water. But all I'm saying is that I would really just ask that before any further decisions are made that there be some kind of a study of the water. Because along with what everybody else has already said, which I've experienced, but there's also some major changes that have taken place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Jeff Cabral, 70 Dorman Avenue. Thanks for allowing us to have a voice here tonight. Everything on my list has already been mentioned multiple times by folks behind me, neighbors in the neighborhood. Two things I'll point out, property valuations. I would imagine that homes are most likely, value of homes are gonna go down in the immediate area of where this development's going to be put together. You know, I'm a Realtor. This is what I do for a living, so I spend a lot of time putting together valuations of properties. The other thing I would mention is, just for clarification, these units are going to be rented, not sold. Can I ask a question?
You can ask the board, and after the public hearing, the applicant can respond to most of these questions.
So I think the gist of it was that it's going to be rental, rental properties, right? That's really all I wanted to say, you know. I will comment on the speed bumps in the neighborhood. It's to the point where my neighbor had to install poles in the front of his house where the speed bump is because the cars are driving up on his lawn to go around the speed bumps. So, you know, he's now passed away, so I'm not sure who's gonna maintain that. I might have to go out there and maintain the poles for his wife so that they're not driving on the lawns. It's just ridiculous where we can't even have our kids ride their bikes. You know, you wanna, you know, have a family, your children grow up. You can't go outside, throw a ball around. It's not like it used to be. I don't know what it was like back in the day, but I would imagine it's a little bit different than now where people just disrespect, you know, your rights. But that's really it. Thank you.
Can you please just spell your last name?
C A B R A L, 70 Dorman Ave.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing all of these neighbors to voice their concerns here today. Thanks, councilmen, for their input as well. I just wanted to say that I'm always amazed, I'm sorry, Mary Lyons, 68 Beard Ave. I'm always amazed when people from outside the neighborhood come in and they think that there's not traffic. Beard Avenue, you can barely get one car by. You have to pull to the side of the road, be courteous, let somebody else pass. We're talking about another 65, 75 cars. My street is a cutthroat from Mineral Spring Avenue to La Hoya, out through Charles. That alone is going to make traffic a nightmare. All of the residents behind me, their concerns with neighborhood traffic is true. They experience it every single day. That alone is one of the reasons all of these neighbors are opposing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Decorte, D E C O R T E. I live at 88 Garfield Street. I've been there for 29 years. I've been in front of the town council. I've been in front of everybody trying to get speed bumps on my street. I live in between Ward and Franklin. Couple of things that I'd like to say is, I'd like to invite any one of you to come sit in my driveway for a few hours, maybe a day. Just come sit in it. I don't care. Park the car, have a coffee, whatever. I want you to see what goes on. I'm not gonna kill you with the traffic stuff because apparently people that don't live in the neighborhood don't have a clue. They just think, "Well, it's probably not that bad." Well, it's terrible. My daughter got out of the car the other day. She almost got hit by a car. That's how bad it is. The second thing I'd like to ask is, before you guys approve anything, I would like for you guys to make sure that they come up with all the stuff that they're supposed to come up with. Anything that you guys ask for a study, I think it all needs to be approved and brought forth before it goes even further. Because without the studies, what do you do? You just say, "Yeah, okay, we're gonna hand it over, and we're gonna keep it going?" Why are we gonna keep it going if the studies prove that you shouldn't do it? Let's not do it. Men's invested money. I'm sorry, he invested money in a property that floods. I was part of FEMA in 2012. Myself and John Ponori got FEMA involved with White House's office. I was gonna make the town pay for an $80,000 H and H study. Charlie wasn't having it. So we got people involved, and that's when FEMA came through to redo all the maps. That property's still in a flood zone. That's a problem. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Maria Leandro. That's L E A N D R O. And I live at 80 Garfield Street, very close to the corner of Ward. And I don't like to speak in public, but I'm going to because this is really bothering me. We have lived there for 44 years, and I still live in the home that I was raised in. And my mother still owns the home. My father, God rest his soul, has passed away, but I had to call 911. And the fire truck couldn't get down my street because there's so many cars parked in the roads. Because there's too many cars per household. They're saying there's 48 apartments that are gonna be built. But they said there's only 65 parking spaces, which means if each household has two vehicles, there are gonna be cars parked on the street. And those streets are so narrow, they can't get through. I filed a complaint with Councilman Amorigi, and he actually helped me. So now Garfield Street at the top of the road is parked on one side only specifically because of my issue with the fire trucks couldn't even get through when I needed them. Also, when it comes to flooding, we didn't have the flooding that we have now. It's gotten worse. To a point, last year, I had to spend $20,000 to put in French drains in my basement because of the flooding. I now have three subpumps in my basement because of the flooding. I didn't have this problem growing up. We never had this problem. And they're going to have to do demolition. We also had to spend a lot of money because we were getting rodents, and we had to get rid of them. They're not coming from my house. They're coming from outside, and they're trying to hide for the winter. And they're trying to get away from the cold. They're coming from outside. Those are wetlands, and they're full of woods. There are problems out there that need to be cleaned up. Those rodents, I don't need more coming around my backyard. I have traps to try to catch them in the yard, and we have caught them. They're out there, but nobody cares, and they need to be cleaned up. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Harrison, 81 Beard Ave, H A. Thomas Harrison, H A R R, I S O N. I live at 81 Beard Ave. I lived there for 29 years, and like everybody else behind me, traffic has been an issue. There are a lot of kids in the neighborhood. Nobody stops at any stop signs. People fly down the road. We've complained to the mayor numerous times. Nothing's been done about it. Now, for this building to be built, he's saying 48 residential units. According to your regs, it's two cars per unit. That's 96 cars. He's got a parking lot for 65 cars. Cars are gonna be parked on the street. You just can't be doing that.
Can I stop you for a moment, Brent? Is that, what is the parking requirement for adaptive reuse?
For adaptive reuse is one per unit.
One per unit?
One per unit.
Nobody has, you're gonna have, married couples are gonna have two cars.
For the regulations for adaptive reuse, which this project falls under, the law states that one parking space per unit is the minimum.
That's a state law. That's not a town law. So we don't have any say.
So what's the purpose of having regulations if that doesn't work?
The state supersedes any town regulations to be have.
And as for the flooding, there's no drainage on Beard Ave, so all the water goes down to the end of the street and into that parcel, so that does flood every year. Enough said.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Piccolo, P I C C O L O. I live at 47 Beard Avenue. And I know everybody, all my neighbors had already mentioned the traffic issue. I live smack dab in the middle of Beard Ave. I have a slow children's sign in front of my house, and it seems like everybody goes 60 down my street. I have a dog, just like many of my neighbors do, and I'm always outside with them, walking them. I have to pull them off the road because I feel like they might get hit by a car. And one thing that wasn't mentioned, you guys are probably all aware of it, Beard Ave comes to a dead end where that property's gonna be. There's only one way out. There's one stop sign on Beard Avenue. It meets Ward. So everybody just comes straight down without stopping, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
The letter that I got said that 48 units per one acre. If I'm not mistaken, there's three acres there. Is this phase one? And phase two's gonna come in three years? They're gonna build another 48 on another acre? And then phase three, another 48? I don't know. Is that possible on that land?
This property's maxed out at 48. They're allowed 15.
Say that again?
The adaptive reuse law that the state passed allows 15 units per acre. So they'd be maxed out. They wouldn't be able to expand.
Only 48 total for the whole property?
Unless the state somehow changes the law.
You can't build no more than 48 on the whole property.
Under the existing law, that's correct.
One acre. Yeah, I know there's three acres.
3.2 acres.
I'm just concerned. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Mazzei. I live at 83 Beard Ave. M A Z Z E I. I'm also concerned about the traffic also, and I live right there, right next door, and the traffic's unbelievable there. We've seen accidents. We've seen, a lot of stuff that is just terrible there. It's just not good intersection at all. Glad to see.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Patricia Beagan, B E A G E N. I live at 84 Beard. So my house is diagonally, directly across from the property. I don't wanna be redundant about the traffic. And I just want you to know that I'm a retired nurse, so I'm home every day. And I know how bad the traffic is over there. They speed down the street. They go through that four-way stop sign like it's nobody's business. I see families walking their kids, walking their dogs constantly, and it's really a safety issue. Having all that property being built there and all those extra people and cars, I don't know how that four-way stop is gonna handle all of that. I've only lived there eight years, unlike many of my neighbors, but it's still my home. And I hope you just take that into consideration, that we're all concerned about the safety of all of us in the neighborhood. And I wish you would just take a ride by there and just see, you know, just how it is over there. And I hope that, you know, you ask them to do everything that you proposed, the traffic study, the DEM study, all of that, because that's gonna affect us and our small neighborhood down the line. And it's not fair to us, and we should have a say in all of this. So that's it.
Can you please just repeat your address?
84 Beard. So I live diagonal from that property.
Thank you.
And I'm also worried about, you know, you talk about the parking for all these people. If that parking lot doesn't hold the families that live there, they're gonna be parking alongside my house right there. And I don't, I wouldn't appreciate that at all. Not only that, but to block traffic, too. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Farias, F A R I A S, and I live at 66 Dorman Ave. And my sister-in-law also lives with us. My car got totaled on the street a couple of years ago. My husband has then put up cameras outside. So we have evidence of people speeding through our four-way stop sign daily. We've called the cops. Cops have sat out our house numerous times. They just don't sit between 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM when that traffic, they're cutting through Mineral Spring to get to that power road. So I have videos that I can show, many videos. Also, I live on a corner, right at the four-way stop sign, so I see everything. I live across from a three-tenement. That three-tenement has about eight to 10 cars, three or four of them which stay on the road. So I can only imagine what 48 apartments is going to do to that neighborhood. And that's all I really wanted to say, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are the neighbors able to see these plans?
Yes, they are. May the applicant, can you come up and swing them around, please? Sorry to come up again. And first, I'll apologize for my fiery presentation. I'm passionate because I understand what they're feeling, so I apologize if I was a little too fiery. Second, I think we've heard loud and clear from the neighbors here, nothing stops you from requiring these studies to be done before we move forward. And again, I would encourage that that's exactly what we do. Let's require it right now. I would ask you to do that. And also, I can't remember if the chairman included it, but I would like a water drainage study as well, if you would consider that. And again, reiterate that I think that should be done now before we move any further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Maria Sigas, Z I G A S. Z I G A S. Mostly my questions, everybody has done the traffic. Does the town have enough resources to maintain 48 extra units in the area? The fire department at Maryville, when they are on call, we still have to wait for the ones to come from Centredale. It doesn't take that long, but I can hear the fire truck for quite a while. So if we have 48 units, we have a minimum of 48 extra individuals in the area that will need to use those resources. Also, who's going to? Also, who's going to clean the snow in that lot? Is it going to be by the company? Or is it going to be on the town to expend their services for snow cleaning? Also for trash collection. How will the trash collection be addressed within the, those forty-eight units that are there? Also, will the sewer have the capacity? We all heard about the problems with the flooding. That will require extended sewer lines to be passed through the area, which will impact the environment. So D E M report is extremely needed. Naragansett Bay report is also very needed. Because I'm not sure that they can go well enough through an area that it can get that flooded. On the flooded area, I've seen it where you don't even know there's debris in the lot. It can flood that high. The other problem, access. There are not sixteen ways, there are three ways. When you come out of the lot, you take a left and then you go right, left, or forward. That's the direct access. If the place has to be reached by fire department, also only has those ways to get in there. The street that is directly in front Ward is a pass-through between Pataca and North Providence. That's where the traffic problem is. It is also fairly narrow. So that, again, a fire truck going through there will have problems. Making the ninety-degree turn from Ward into Bird Street, that will be very hard on a fire truck. Especially, I think we mentioned the twenty-four-foot wide access. That will be hard, again, on the fire truck if the, is not cleaned properly for the snow. You're going to have the trucks maneuvering and delaying emergency response. The rats. I'm sure there's plenty of other animals in there. Right now in there, there's also maybe one coyote that I've seen. There's deer, there's turkeys, but there's also birds of prey. Those birds of prey are the ones that are controlling the rat population that crosses on the street. By moving all of that, all these animals are going to be coming into the neighborhood and directly into the houses in the neighborhood. So if they stay there, or if they move further and the birds of prey and all that remain in the property, we have a way of controlling, a natural way of controlling some of the rat population. Which rats are all over the, the city. Pavement. The area is paved, but it is not fully paved. It is fully cracked. Because there's a lot of trees in the area. They are the ones who are maintaining the property. Those trees help with the drainage and that. The plan does not show that many of trees remaining, talks about landscaping and all that. Again, we will be getting a lot more runoff coming through the cars that are parked there and everything else. The brick factory, silica and sulfur dioxide are common products used in the making of bricks. At the time that the bricks were being made in there, there was no environmental regulations. All that material has to be in the soil. What's on top right now, old cars, junk, whatever the neighborhood dumped in there, whatever the prior owners trucked in there. If you look at the property, there's a lot of products that have been running off into the soil. This is not just a matter of cleaning. The material has run off into, the water has been on top of that trash and it has drained through the cracked pavements. So definitely that will also require the studies that you talked about. And, uh, I think that's me. That's, that's it for now. Everything else has been addressed by my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you please just tell, ma'am? Ma'am, what was your first name and address? Yes. And your address, please? Thirty-two, thank you.
Uh, is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak to this project? Hey, can, can you come up and address the board, please, sir? And, the- Oh. No, we're not, we're not, not gonna have- I, I think a, a site plan would most likely benefit, um, that-
Would you like a copy of the site plan?
Yeah.
Want a copy?
Yeah.
And is your driveway?
Is it, are you gonna knock everything down? And build all new construction or use the, the existing building and build off that?
That's it. That's a good question for the applicant, but I believe, uh, I'm not gonna assume, but because this is an adaptive reuse, the existing footprint has to remain.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, one more. Come on up, ma'am. Yep, it's you. Nope, you came up three times already. Yep. Say your name and your address.
Hi, it's Marilyn Nastari, N A S T A R I. I live on Campbell Avenue. I have a few questions about this. Um, he said these are apartments. How many of these buildings are gonna be on that land?
Uh, there are two existing and two will remain. The same buildings will remain.
What do you mean, two existing? Already built there?
The two existing on the property will remain and be converted into residential units.
So there are two of these, these already on that property?
There are two buildings on the property, ma'am.
Like this?
No, not like the rendering. That, that is a representation of what the applicant proposes the buildings will look like after construction is complete. So that is a picture of what may come.
And more may come?
No.
No.
So there's no proposed construction, there's only proposed renovation. There's no proposed construction. There's only renovation proposed of existing structures.
How many apartments are gonna be in something like this?
On that building forty-two and the smaller building next door? Uh, six.
Six apartments?
And the side building and then forty-two in the larger building that is there.
Are these apartments gonna be low income or are they gonna be senior citizens?
Yeah, I believe-
I'm sorry about our taxes going up. That's why I'm, I'm concerned. And I'm definitely dis- concerned about the traffic.
Yes.
Definitely.
A lot of, yes, a lot of your neighbors are all, boys, they're concerned about the traffic as well tonight.
So are these just regular apartments? Or are they gonna be, like I said, are they gonna be elderly or are they gonna be low income? Or are they gonna be apartments who just? Any of us?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe that the applicant said it was market rate, but he can answer your question once he comes up to respond to all the the questions that were asked in the public comment.
Are you gonna have another meeting on this?
Most likely, oh yes, most likely. Uh, so-
The reason I'm asking is-
It was already advertised.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking is that, uh, some of the people, some of my, um, neighbors such as myself never received a letter. And I was talking to, uh, my state rep. And he's told me that they only have to send it to the people that live two hundred yards away from the property. That's not fair. I live more than two hundred yards away from that property. I live on Campbell. I'm gonna be affected by these apartments. I think they should send them to everybody on Baird, Campbell, Dickinson, Lojai, and wherever other people. Right. I think we all should receive those letters.
I would- I would speak to your state rep about that. I would speak to your state rep about that. They're the ones that make the state laws.
Well, it's Arthur Corvay, if you need his name. What?
Thank you. Uh, do you have any more questions regarding this application?
I'll come up with more, I'm sure. Thank you.
Alright, we're, well, we're gonna-
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing. The time is seven forty-four PM. Thank you very much for your participation in tonight's hearing, everybody. Okay. So we'd like the applicant to come back up. Uh, Jack, I don't know how many notes you were able to take.
I took several notes. I'll, I'll just point out, in terms of the, the parking, um, like we said, we were, were required to have one space per unit. But we actually have, so there's forty-eight units. We have an extra twenty-one parking spaces that we're putting on the site. So there'll be almost one, um, car for each bedroom in, in the property. If not, so, so we have total of sixty-seven parking spaces minus the forty-eight. And then we, so we have another twenty and twenty-one, two bedrooms. So I added those together. So that gives us a total of, um, that total sixty-nine bedrooms. So with the sixty-nine bedrooms, we have sixty-seven spaces, which is almost one space per car, which is over what we're required to have.
Cor- correct, you are exceeding the minimum of, the minimum number of parking.
Quite a bit. Uh, number two, in terms of the concern about-
I'm sorry, can, can the public please, um, refrain from speaking? If you'd like to have a conversation, you're more than welcome to step outside the chambers, but, uh, the acoustics in this room, as you guys know, very, very, uh, bad. And I'm having trouble hearing the gentleman with the microphone. Thank you.
The, a- as far as the rentals, my client intends to rent all the units. Now, as in other projects, um, he, uh, many times he converts these units to condominiums. So he may keep some of them and rent them. He may sell some of them. It might be a combination of rentals or an ownership. But a- a- as you know, a condominium form, it's just a form of ownership. The, the number of apartments won't change. Um, but at some future date, he, he may, just like he did, for example, he has a project in Cranston. He did, uh, ninety-six units in, uh, uh, Country View Condominiums. He's kept thirty of them and he's sold like sixty of them. So it's a partial rental, partial ownership. That may or may not happen at some point in the future. He hasn't decided. In terms of the, the affordability nature of the units, um, just because of their size, I, I suspect in where they're located, um, many of these units, whether we, we talk about an affordability component or not, are going to be affordable. That's just the nature of these units, according to my client. Um, we really can't respond-
My, um, edification. What's the rent range? Like if it was today?
Can you check with that, right?
The rent range would probably be from fourteen fifty to eighteen hundred.
So for the two bedrooms, they'd be eighteen hundred?
Like eighteen, eighteen-five.
That's, that is below LMI. That's below affordable. I just wanna let you know.
I guess why I'm saying we have-
Exactly, so-
Just by the size of the units.
But the difference between affordable housing versus section eight housing, first of all, as you probably know, we're not w- w- we're not allowed to ask people how they're paying for their rent. If they show up with a section eight certificate, you're required to take it. You're not required to say, oh, wait a second, we don't wanna rent to a section eight person. But affordable doesn't, I mean, even fifteen hundred dollars, people are, all have jobs and are working that are gonna be going into these units. Um, and, but that being said, if someone does come in with a section eight certificate and a ticket, you have to accept it. You can't say we're not gonna have any, um, just because you're, um, on, on section eight and you need a ticket. We, we can't reject that person because of a section eight certificate. The other thing, I know some people, and we're gonna have a try, obviously we want a traffic study, but many of the issues that they brought up concerning people speeding, a traffic study is not gonna address people speeding through the streets. A traffic study is not gonna address the issue of whether or not there's enough stop signs in the neighborhood. That, that's out of my client's control. So, you know, people speeding down the street is not gonna be commented on by our traffic study. Or the number of stop signs, or the people not stopping at, at stop signs. So my client is not gonna be able to resolve that issue. That's something, that's an enforcement issue with the town. Um, there are some other questions that the, I-
Uh, yep, so, um, uh, the comment for environmental study was made, specifically regarding a phase one.
Yeah. We, we certainly can have a phase one done. They're, they're not, phase ones aren't very expensive.
Yeah. Um, rodent and pest control concerns when renovations to the property are, are happening. Um, does the, is the client amenable to having rodent and pest control happen prior to and during construction?
Well, well, I, I have a, um, one of my uh, subcontractors who goes into houses when we're gonna take them down. And they have to obey whatever the situation may be. So I'll have him go there.
Answer's yes. Thank you.
Answer's yes.
Uh, fire, fire department, um, assessment of the, of the site plan.
Well, that, that's something the town does automatically. Um, I know in the last project we had, we had a letter from the, uh, the fire department indicating it was satisfactory. I know my client had an informal conversation with the chief of police.
They want a formal letter.
Yeah, yeah. And does your, does your, um, civil engineer, does he have the ability to, um, uh, path out graphically, um, our, uh, town's firefighting apparatus um, on the, on the plan to, to indicate that ball turning radiuses of, of our equipment can be maintained?
Well, well-
In the, in the dish, in addition, or even to, to solidify the chief's assessment?
Chief will do that. He, he will, he will tell you everything and if he's has access to be able to get to it.
I think you're asking us, once we speak to the fire chief, are we able to show maybe a color-coded rendering showing where the, the truck would enter and exit coming into that neighborhood? Is that, is that what you're asking for?
Uh, no, what I've, what I've seen is, is a study of, um, the actual route that the fire truck takes on a property. It, it, it shows the footprint of the fire truck and, uh, basically the, call it like the tire tracks through the parking lot to basically determine, um, or, or conclude whether or not there's enough maneuvering clearance for a fire department
Right.
apparatus.
I understood.
Well, with to my experiences in the past, the fire department is not gonna go into the parking lot. He, if he can get, if the front of the building is on the street, and he'll address that. He, he, they won't go pulling the ladder trucks and everything around the park.
We'd rather have the fire department definitely-
Well, that's what I said.
Assess the plan.
Get something about it.
Yep, assess the, assess the plan and have them determine the best, the best way to respond to an emergency.
Yep.
And make requests, recommendations, modifications to your, to your plan to ensure that the residents of your building can be, um, uh, can be addressed in, or assisted in life safety situation. Um, snow clearing, how is snow clearing going to be accommodated on the property?
Correct, that's, we, we'd love it if the town would pay for our plowing, but-
No, how?
Uh, where is it gonna be put?
Is storage gonna remain on the property? And it's gonna be by private company?
Yeah, it'll be private. Um, we'll address the issue where the snow's gonna be placed on the property when it gets plowed. Okay.
Um, how is, uh, trash gonna be collected?
Well, we have a, we had a, we show a dumpster on the property. I know there was a comment from the staff indicating we're gonna have to move that out of the flood zone. Um, I think we showed it initially in the flood zone, which is against code, so we're gonna have to place that in, in another area. But to answer your question, we're, we're gonna have, uh, a trash container.
Private?
Yeah, private.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a, an araganset, excuse me?
Um, not yet.
Sewer capacity letter?
Not yet.
Not yet. Um, how about, uh, water capacity from pro- pro-
We had, we had a water letter that was submitted.
They have the water letter.
Is that submitted?
It is.
Yeah.
It should be in the packet.
Yeah.
Okay, um, has, um, have you done a, an electrical power study and is there enough? Has, uh, Endgrade or Rhode Island Energy deemed sufficient power to, uh, supply the building?
There is three phases.
There's three phases on the fault.
The buildings, so we're, we got all the power that we need.
And did I hear you guys say that, um, the stormwater management and wetlands permit has, have been issued to Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management?
Filed and, we haven't got a decision from-
No, no, but the applicant, the application is in with them, or?
The application has been filed.
Has been filed?
Yes, it's, we haven't gotten it back yet.
So, just legally, just so I, um, the state law says that you, the town can accept an application for preliminary plan without state approvals. But you have to have your state approvals in order for the town to grant the approval on preliminary plan. In the past, some communities will waive that, but I just want you to be on notice that the approval of preliminary plan may not happen until those state approvals are received. The approval of preliminary plan may not happen until those state approvals are received.
Um, and this did not come up from the neighbors, but it was um a comment that I think the board had in a photometric uh foot candle study of. Exterior lighting on the property, um.
I think my client stated that all the lighting is gonna be that down lighting, no, no floodlights aiming out, but everything's gonna be down. Or some of the lights will be washing the building, but if you need a more, a, a, a better detail to show that or, or.
It's a photometric, Tim knows what it is.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
Okay. Right. Yeah, I think, I think that's a.
Did you say that you were going to have a third-party engineer look at this?
Yeah, so I, leave, would leave, well. Um, we're, we're aboard, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss, um. But I, I do believe that, um. Uh, considering the, the history of the property, everything that we learned about the property tonight and every, um, from your presentation, the engineer's presentation, and also the um. Uh, the public here, I think third-party um, uh, study regarding um, uh stormwater. Um. And um, uh possibly a traffic study would be, um. Could, a peer review, I'm sorry, would be, would be um applicable.
You say stormwater study?
A, a, I'm sorry, it's a, it's a peer review of the, of the, the drainage plants prepared by um Commonwealth.
Yeah, the only, there's nothing, the only thing he can look at is traffic.
No, he's talking about, so you're.
Third-party engineer, it's only traffic. It's what, whatever D E M approves, D E M approves, there's nobody that steps over them.
All right.
So, uh, traffic, if there's a debate.
What my client's saying is that D E M is the final operator of the, of the drainage.
Speak into the mic, sorry.
D E M is the final operator, right, Tim? Well, they are a third-party.
You are.
Right, so we're gonna have D E M, we want another reviewer on top of D E M.
That happens all the time.
Yeah, third-party review of the, of the civil engineering.
Is that required by town ordinance as well? For all multifamily developments?
So you wanna tra- you wanna traffic study, and who's gonna, is D'Amico gonna do, do all the peer review on everything?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So basically, we're gonna be looking at a phase one. We're gonna be looking at a traffic study and a D E M drainage. Um.
A review of what Tim?
Peer review. And, and the fire department.
As well as uh the photometric.
Those are the four things that we're gonna.
And the modif- the modification to the interior plant, uh, show every unit with windows?
Those and the, and the snow.
And the snow piles.
And the um, the modification of the facade to break up, like we talked about, the, the facade. So actually break up the, the appearance, yeah.
I also think that.
They'll take care of that, they got us.
Yeah, I, I know they'll do a good job, um. I also think that the team should also reconsider um alleviating con- congestion onto the site vehicular-wise with, with only one entrance into the parking lot. Um, on, on Baird, I, I. Um. I just think that the, the development in, would, would improve upon its impact to the neighborhood, um, should there be two. Access points in and out of the, of the property, not, rather than the, the one on, on Baird.
I could look into that.
Consider that, thank you.
And then, can I, just, so for NBC, he talked about NBC, I, I, that's a different agency, but. I don't know if the town has like a sewer department, you should get a sewer capacity letter.
From an average interface.
I don't know if it's N, NBC.
It's NBC.
That's it? You don't have a sewer department in the town?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the NBC took over the whole town on our province.
Okay, other towns, they have both.
Oh, I know, that's why I was telling you.
While you're standing there, sir, um, there were a lot of comments regarding flo- flooding, and I was, can you just describe what the proposed topography does on-site and where the projected um sheet flow would go?
What I heard from a lot of comments, it sounds like a lot of people having flooding in their basements. Which is a different animal than. I don't know, from our site, there's also the component, there is a floodplain out there. So during large rainfall events, that culvert is gonna start backing up because the amount of water coming down the hill. Is greater than what that culvert can take. So it starts backing up and that's why there's a floodplain associated, just up gradient of that culvert. So you got two animals, you got high groundwater table, it sounds like, people's basements are flooding. That's due to, who knows what, their soils conditions, uh, it could be high bedrock near their house. Uh, that's a different animal than the hundred-year floodplain. But it's a drainage issue, I, I get it, when you get a lot of rain, you get flooded basements, you get high water, you know, there's a lot of things going on with a lot of rain. So, that's why. For Rhode Island, living space has to be above the hundred-year floodplain. And that's, this project does do that, the parking area below is in the hundred-year floodplain.
And um, does the current site design um. Uh, allow for. More water to run off this property than it currently does now?
Oh, no, it's gonna be significantly less, I mean, we're removing so much pavement from the site, significantly less.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, guys.
So, um. How much time are we gonna need for the peer review, I, I'd rather we. Not schedule this, not continue this matter. Until we know what, what, what the timeframe is for getting a peer review.
So, in the past, he's done it within two or three weeks, so I would get it in as soon as possible, so he has time.
Well, i- if I can just ask, I, I think we should hold off until we address these items and have the revised set of plans for him to review. Because we're talking possibly a second curb cut, right? Why is he gonna review this plan set when we're making some changes, so?
I would agree.
All right, yeah, plus you, um, need time for a traffic study.
All right, how much time?
Should that be a condition?
To do what?
Traffic study.
Uh, I think we'll have a traffic study done probably in the next two weeks.
So you take one month.
Oh, we. Make the shoe floor.
If town will continue.
Right, we'll continue, yeah. What if they say no?
So I know there was a question concerning advertising, so we've advertised, so we would just need to continue it tonight. Um, number one, number two, um, we'd like to continue it to the next meeting, and obviously if for some reason we run into an issue with the traffic study, then we, we'd call you ahead of time and, and continue it. We're unable to get that work done and then over to the third-party to peer review.
And as I always request, you will waive uh the deadline within which this board has to make a decision um for that period of time. So, we're adding on another thirty days.
Right. Not a problem.
Thank you. Um.
Yes.
Okay.
Of everything, including the, well, we'll make the decision on combining, you wanna, you wanna continue everything.
Yep. Uh, and one more comment, um, because, because the um. Uh, the, the site drawings and the, um, got up, updated and, and you have a really nice rendering there, I think it would benefit um the presentation. Um, that the, the rendering that you have right there be, be updated to match um the, the site design as well. Showing what landscape elements are gonna be in, in place, um, cause it. Yes, it's just a, a more.
Part of the building is gonna be all grass. So all that asphalt comes out, there's so much asphalt not needed.
Co- co- correct, I, I hear you, I understand, but the person in the back may not, and they may just be looking at that rendering, saying that there's gonna be parking in front of the building, which isn't one hundred percent correct.
The right what?
Correct, yes. They do, it's four of seven. What's it called? Well, they got trees.
Typically.
Um. No, they don't, they don't, they don't. Yeah. Um, and I just realized that the landscaping plan um wasn't as complete as I originally thought, um, I do see trees peppered on the, um, on the plan, but um. Uh, can the presentation be, I think the presentation can be improved um with the landscape plan actually identifying species of trees. And a delineation of um pavement versus um landscaping, you, you did have a color uh. Board there, which I thought was very, very helpful compared to the black and white that we have up here. Okay.
You probably can show the rear parking lot with the landscape and all around it, and the green and the, the parking lot in a grayish color. You'll be able to see the separations and this picture in the front. I know you're looking at all asphalt, but. Th- this is the road right here, but all right here.
Yep.
It's not gonna be, it'll be green.
Right, understood.
All fun and, and be a lot more pleasant to look at.
Good. Thank you. Okay, so what I, her applicant would like to continue.
Yeah, what date would that be?
It'd be uh March twelfth. At six P M again, for anyone in the audience.
Well, if, if, if you're not here, I'll get everything.
So.
I can't.
Do I have to repeat anything?
No.
No.
You were just asking. What do you know that? You're not making a decision, I think I should be here.
Oh, yeah, these are.
No.
I know, my, my is kicking it over.
Solid notes.
That's the weird way I wanted to.
Do we, do we have a motion?
Okay, yep, so we'll open it up for discussion, uh, if um, people in the public, if you can just quiet down, we're still, uh, we're still meeting here, um. So I'll open it up for discussion, the applicant would like to um continue. The.
We can't.
Topic, um. Which is described as a master plan review with request to combine preliminary pa- plan review for an adaptive reuse development converting the existing two structures into forty-eight residential units. Um, address one fourteen Baird Avenue, um, the applicant would like to continue to the March um, planning board hearing. Um, with the condition that the board has an extension on their time to render an opinion on the top, on the um. Uh, on the application, do I hear a motion?
So we just.
Yeah, so moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll call for the vote, Lou?
Aye.
Warren? Steve? Chair votes, aye. We have a continuance. Thank you very much.
And just for everyone in the audience, again, that is uh March twelfth at six o'clock P M, there will be no additional mailings because this is a continuance. So just uh put that date in your calendar and uh be aware.
Thank you. All right, sit down, you gotta make a motion in appearance.
I make a motion, that way we adjourn.
All right, yeah, wait, 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 do we have a motion to adjourn? Warren?
Aye.
No, you, and you sec- and Lou seconded, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think he was on, I don't think, I don't think he was on our board, but, but that gentleman, look, project upgrades existing.